To order, we have all council members except Councilwoman Marks, but she's going to be here momentarily. So first, I will move to approve the minutes of the June 30th joint meeting of Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay, so we have two items on the docket tonight essentially. We have the communications explaining those items, but the real matters of substance are ordinance 162025, which is complete streets, and ordinance 172025, which is the case advisory board. So I thought we'd start with complete streets. And, sorry, Vice President Baker, do you want to kick us off with that?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, President Keppel. So, in grandicus, and then I also sent to our colleagues, basically a compare version of the original combined complete street ordinance, which councilperson Strebig, Keppel, and myself introduced along with the mayor, but it still needed a little work. There were a couple of discussion points within the original ordinance that we introduced back in April, but it built upon, you know, nearly two years of work to come to the right complete streets model for Lakewood. A lot of other municipalities of a lot of different sizes have a lot of different ways of doing this. We knew that we had to work really closely with the administration, public works, planning, law, a bunch of different departments to come up with what was right for Lakewood. We've seen complete streets maybe not deliver on promises in other communities because maybe one department championed it, and it didn't kind of have a cross-department collaboration of buy-in as to what the process would be. So we can quickly go through some of the edits, and then I don't know if the administration has, they may have points on some of the edits as we go through them. But on the first page, the Planning Commission brought up some language, which is important about our whereas clauses, that, you know, it's not just citizens, but residents and visitors, you know, need a safe network. So we made some changes, changing citizens to residents and visitors, to the community, and then residents and visitors again. The Chair of the Planning Commission noted that Lakewood wasn't actually planned as a develop, or as a dense, walkable, streetcar community. It was more so just developed that way by individual kind of builders of certain sections of town. So we included that. We put protect property values as opposed to increase property values. And then also, on the second page, there was a whereas clause that we wanted to make sure that, and I don't, you know, the Law Department may have some explanation on this point, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, as it relates to our charter and the enforceability of complete streets, that there was an acknowledgement that if the administration agrees, and that's reflected in the ordinance, that the mayor ultimately signs to the extent it passes, that those issues would be mollified or no longer a problem. Is that a good way to describe it, Director Vargo?
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Through the Chair, I think that's fine at the highest level, instead of getting into the details, but I think it was well said by yourself. Thank you.
Love to hear that. Thank you. It's been a long day already. And then we changed signalized intersection, and we also removed wide travel lanes. I think that was just a holdover language. Going into the meat of the ordinance, in definitions, we changed around a couple things. You know, preserve or add the prevalence of trees, so kind of nodding to the element that to the extent we can preserve the tree canopy, I know we're already doing that, you know, as we plan public works projects, but might as well codify it. And then we had a little bit of discussion about recycled materials, how it's challenging sometimes in public works projects, particularly road projects that do that, so we used sustainable instead. And this is where we get into the meat of some of the things we talked about, which, you know, a lot of this ordinance revolves around what is the definition of a transportation project that would trigger complete streets, the process, and then where it would fall in the process. So we, there was a robust discussion about how some of our roadways in town, you know, the projects that we do, the bigger projects, are coordinated with either the Department of Transportation, Cuyahoga County, a great example of that is the Lake Clifton Connector Project, where we're doing a road diet and adding some nice pedestrian bike infrastructure near the border of Rocky River and over the Rocky River Bridge on Clifton. That's technically a county project. And/or an RTA project. For example, in our neighborhood to the east, RTA is doing a bus/rabbit transit project down West 25th corridor. So that's technically an RTA project, and RTA is running it, even though it's the City of Cleveland right-of-way. So we wanted to have some nod in the ordinance that while the city might not be able to require by this ordinance that those entities follow complete streets, our complete streets ordinance, we wanted to make sure that the administration and council were aligned, that we would really encourage them to do so. And if you've ever been involved in some of these transportation projects, a lot of them take federal funds, and a lot of those federal funds through the NEPA clearance, which is the National Environmental Protection Act, requires that you have some public process anyways. So I think a lot of these entities like ODOT, the county, or RTA will be thankful that there's a plug-and-play process, that they can look at our ordinance and see, and say, this is what we need to do, so we're no longer flying by the seat of our pants, we kind of have a process that we can follow. At the same time, we can't require them to do so. So we just put encourage. I put strongly encourage, but the administration said, let's do encourage, so that's okay. For tier-one transportation projects, public comment, good point from some folks, that Detroit Avenue was not included as a route or intersection in the active transportation plan, but it is such a vital spine in our city that we wanted to make sure that if a majority or a large portion of Detroit was redone, reconstructed, or worked on, that it would trigger tier-one process. So that's the intention of the edit in the tier-one area. And then tier-two, this is basically the projects that aren't required to go through Planning Commission, but the administration will make best efforts to add complete street elements. There was discussion in committee and in the ordinance drafting about whether or not to include community development block grant funds provided by HUD for a project. And as we worked with the administration and gathered more facts, we learned two things. One, eligible census blocks in the city for CBDG funding have increased, so that means that perhaps some of that money will go into more streets in Lakewood. And secondly, that most of the time, the administration has an idea of where that CBDG funding should go. But there are instances where there's $100,000 for, say, leftover at the end of the year, and there's 90 days to redo an intersection, or redo a crosswalk or something. And we wanted to make sure that we are flexible and not losing those funds. So technically, if there is something that is unexpected or not reasonably foreseeable, it will not have to go through the full tier-one process, which I think is a reasonable way to do it. Section B, consider and strive to implement, I think is a good way to put it. So that's, and then there was just an editing error that Tom Bullock pointed out in our first committee meeting. Thank you, Tom. And then we also put in later in that section, lighting and public art as components that should be considered in any transportation project. And then we, kind of where the rubber meets the road and where this process starts, it's projects starting in 2027, which does give us a runway. You know, we, I would have liked to have seen it earlier, but I understand that a lot of the projects that are going to be in the ground next year have already kind of been planned, but the administration has said they'll make efforts to have a public process for tier-one transportation projects that are funded in 2026. Now, do we have an idea, and I didn't ask you to prepare for this, but what projects may be on the table for 2026, or is that something you could provide after the meeting?
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Right now, obviously, Bunce Road is planned for 2026. We just had recently, last Wednesday, thanks to you and Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner for joining us, the Water Main Town Hall meeting, which was Northland and Norton. So obviously, with both projects, Bunce Road has many complete street elements in it, I'm sure, as we are all very well aware. And we're happy to report that as we explained at the Town Hall meeting, that Northland is going to be getting some complete street elements as well. So the process has already begun, as we talked about, in '26, so those are pretty much the ones that are set as of right now. Every other, any other type of transportation project at this time is not set in stone.
Thank you, Director Gordon. From my understanding, there are curb bump outs on Northland as well, is that correct?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. Just simple things that make life as a person walking easier, or biking. And then as we go through kind of the process for complete streets, I won't go into deep detail, because we've kind of already covered at our original meeting, but we really kind of put a fine point to the stage-one and stage-two submission. So if you remember, by way of updating you, or, you know, was that, if it was a tier-one transportation project, so that's basically the big, major transportation projects that are called out in the active transportation plan, that there will be a stage-one submission. So the Public Works Department agrees to submit a conceptual, pre-designed kind of schematic of the project and take input. And they'll give a description of why certain complete streets elements called for in the active transportation plan, but not limited to the active transportation plan, are not feasible, if that's applicable. And it says, to the extent any tier-one transportation project is very complex, the stage-one submission may come back to Planning Commission for additional input. So that's, so I mean, from Planning Commission, that some of these projects are pretty detailed. Like if we got funding to do Detroit, for example, I'm sure maybe more than one meeting would be appropriate there. And so that rounds that out. And then stage-two, this is where we got a little bit into what's Planning Commission's role here, you know, are they accepting, denying, whatever? I think we got to a point where it's very important that the public understands what the final plan is, and this is a way of documenting that. And Planning Commission essentially receives and files that stage-two communication. I think that's the right way to go. And then, the active transportation plan, so section E, there's lots of discussion about it. I think the 10-year window is, I hope we don't wait 10 years, but I think as far as what we do in the ordinance, I want to be pretty friendly to staff as far as how often we update it. Now, that can be driven by council and our budget priorities and what we want to see, so there are things that we can do on this digest to make sure that it is updated, if we feel necessary, more than often than once every 10 years. And then the reporting elements, we say citywide trees, or street trees related to transportation projects, a five-year outlook for upcoming transportation projects, which I think will be very helpful to Planning Commission and to the public to know kind of what's on the docket, data on the neighborhood traffic calming program, and then any CBDG projects that were implemented in the past year that weren't, that didn't go through the process. And then I took out the emergency language, because there's a lot of discussion about that. I'm fine with it being effective whenever is the first available time in law. So that's the high level. I don't know if the administration or my colleagues have any comments, but it's been a long road, but I do think that this is a really good start for Lakewood. And as we've seen, as Director Gordon mentioned, you know, these conversations, and I think the public advocacy and awareness of these issues have created more of a culture at City Hall of considering these things as well, which is not something you can put in ordinance, but that's just culture. And so I think this will put some accountability behind that culture, and maybe allow for, you know, an upward spiral of input from the public, and then the public being engaged in, the biggest manifestation of city government to them, which is their street. So I, it's been a really, you know, this is how public policy is made. Sometimes it was contentious, sometimes it was friendly, but we're here, and I think it's a really good product, so.
Thank you, Vice President Baker, and thank you very much for your leadership on this. I know it's been a long road, and thank you to the administration for working with us on this as well. I think we've gotten there, finally, so that's good. And I'll open up other council members. Councilman Evans?
Thanks, Chair. I'll also thank you, Vice President Baker, for your work on this. I know I've been following this along since well before I was on council. It's been a tough project for you, but I'm happy to be here for when we're seeing this cross the finish line. I'm excited to see that we added public art and lighting into this. I think those two things in and of themselves are, can be traffic calming, and also make our streets much more walkable, so thanks for that. And, yeah, I'm, one of my biggest concerns was updating the active transportation plan every 10 years, but I'm glad to see that we're looking at language that allows us to be more proactive on that, so we're not stuck to that timeline, because I think it will behoove us from time to time, as different development products come up, to take a fresh look at that at the interim. So, thanks again to all of us on council, thanks to the administration, the Planning Department, it's nice to see this come together.
Thank you. Councilman Marks?
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilman Baker for all the attention to detail he gave us. It was an arduous project that I could not even conceive of contemplating, but you did a great job. You really worked on this diligently and produced a great product, so I'm very happy that we're able to bring this to fruition. So thank you for all your hard work.
Other colleagues? Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner?
Just echoing previous colleagues' comments, congratulations, Kyle, oh, sorry, Councilman Baker.
You haven't done anything yet.
Well, I know, I know, but you're, this is, this is solid work, solid work, so I'm happy to potentially support this, so thanks.
Councilman Bullock?
Yep. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Councilman Strebig?
Yes, thank you. Echoing everyone's thanks to Councilman Baker, and also to Council President Keppel, for working with the administration and for the administration's hard work on this. I think that this is just opening more doors for us to improve communication between the city and the residents, and opportunities for us to work more closely with them and understand more of what they need. So thanks, everybody.
Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Madam President, or Madam Chair. Good work by the primary sponsors. Thanks, Director Vargo and Director Gordon, and Director Bynum about, you know, working collegially. I want to, just in rapid-fire order, so I'm going to have to excuse myself early from the meeting in about seven minutes or something, but I think there's one S missing in the whereas clause that we could, understood, be corrected, or make a motion early on, is promote, something, the city understands, I'll find it for you. The, I'm glad to see, sorry? I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The, I think it's important that we added, and, you know, the city of Lakewood departments will consider and strive to implement complete streets principles, that's probably a good way to express it. It still gives the administration some flexibility, but it also makes sure that there's a little more oomph to the consider. Yes, I wanted to ask Director Gordon one note on the tree dimensions, which I'm glad, very glad to see, because I think that's important. I mean, the, you know, trees are, in our constrained area, always going to be difficult, but planting a tree is not as good as preserving a tree, all things being equal. All things are not equal, because there's utilities, underground, above, there's narrow curbs, et cetera, and a tree that was too large for the space was planted 40 years ago, you inherited that. Nevertheless, it's thriving, and if we can more than not preserve, instead of cut down and then replace, we'll have saved money, capital, and 40 years of growth, and all the canopy services. So whenever possible, we want to do that. Now, I know that we do that whenever possible, but really drilling down on what that means on different streets, I think is a very non-trivial item, you know, that makes all the difference for the character, livability. It's hot outside, shocker, when you have street trees, it cools things down. So that work, I mean, really, if we can get better and better at that task on our road projects, that makes a huge difference. Even if you're saving all the trees, every third or fourth tree, that is a character bestowing and stormwater management tool. So, any thoughts?
So, Councilman Bullock, I appreciate that. As, as I'm sure you are aware, and I have brought up on many of occasions, our mindset in public works is if we can preserve a tree, we're going to do everything we can to preserve that tree. We know how much trees are valued in the City of Lakewood, and we know all that comes with that, so within all of our construction projects, if we can preserve a tree, we will. But obviously, there's certain circumstances, and unfortunately with construction, it's more frequent than not, that unfortunately the trees need to go down. So if we do remove a tree, similar to what you said, we really have been spending a lot of time to pick the right tree for the right tree lawn, that's the way we like to say it, and put the, put the correct tree back for the correct tree lawn, whether it's the size of the tree lawn, the location, things of that nature. We want to put the best tree back that will, that will strive in that location. So that is, that is our mindset, so rest assured. And with any projects that we do, if we can preserve the trees, we will.
Thank you. It's one foot on the accelerator, one foot on the brakes when it comes to trees, because we're investing, and then we're taking away. And even if we balance dollar-for-dollar, we can't get the time back. And I guess what I'm driving at is some contractors probably could benefit from training and management and oversight. Maybe other contractors do a historically good job, but I don't know, you know, I know that it varies over the years, how well we've been able to perform. But as I was told, you know, trees on the streets are traffic calming, so is parking in the street, anyways, baked in things. So I just wanted to drill down on that point. Thank you. Happy to support this. I've got one brief comment for the next ordinance, but I'll plan to support both of these with the changes, even if I'm not here.
Thank you. I want to, thank you for those comments. The mild typo is on page two. I don't think we even need to necessarily do a motion, that's just adding an S, but we can do a motion if we need to, but it's just a typo. And then the, I did have one question on the last page, in the list of things reported back, where it says, information on any CBDG project implemented in the past year, but we're specifically talking about transportation projects for this, right? It was, or did you not want to?
Yeah, so I think CBD, it might be defined. We, no, you're right, we may want to be more clear there, that, and the intent is any CBDG project that was unexpected, or, what language we use above, unexpected or not reasonably foreseeable. So perhaps, as we go through this, we can make a motion to edit that, say, information on any CBDG project, any CBDG transportation project that was unexpected or not foreseeable that was implemented in the past year. So I think when we get to that point, we can do that.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Yeah, I guess the first motion would be, I guess, to substitute
Okay.
the ordinance with the version that's in grandicus.
Are you making that?
I'm making that motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All right, and then, you want to do the motion for the language?
Should we?
Oh, vote on that one? Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, you're right. All right, so on the motion to substitute, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes?
And I'll make a motion to correct the typo on page two, the S.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I will make a motion to edit F9, that currently says, information on any CBDG project implemented in the past year, to say, information on any CBDG transportation project that was unexpected or not reasonably foreseeable that was implemented in the past year.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right. Would you like to do the honors to refer favorably out of committee?
I don't know if we have public comment, but if, but, and also, I will say that I, there was a lot of people involved, including President Keppel, spent a lot of time on this, and Councilperson Strebig was a close sponsor, and was at a lot of the meetings, too. And the administration, this was a lot of work. Like I said, sometimes on council, we think we know what is best, and we introduce something, and then you go through the sausage-making process of really understanding what is best. Now, what I will say in this, we didn't get everything we wanted. You know, I, I wanted to be pretty aggressive in the original thing we implemented, that anytime we pave a street, we do this. So I think you need to be able to get the big ones and get a process, and then maybe in five, 10 years, we can do that, right? So I think, I think this is, why it's good public policy, is it's public policy that there's buy-in on, and the administration is excited to implement, so that will produce good results for us up here and the administration as well. So, thank you, I mean, I don't know how many hours I spent staring at you, Director Vargo, on this, but it was a long time, so. So I will go ahead and make a motion to recommend adoption at full council of the substituted and amended ordinance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay. We, I don't see a sign-in sheet. I don't know if anybody wanted to make public comment on this, or, come on up. Push it so that... Hang on, Emily, I don't think your mic's, yeah, it's not picking you up. We're having a little trouble with the video feed, too, so I don't know if that's related.
Sit down and talk.
Yeah, if, we could grab a different microphone. We just want to make sure that folks at home, there you go. Woo, that one works. That works.
All right.
Sorry, but we just want to make sure people can hear you at home.
Can you hear me? Yeah. All right, well, my name is Emily Lindberg, and I'm here tonight to voice my strong support for ordinance 16 and ordinance 17, establishing a complete streets policy and creating the complete streets education and advisory board. These ordinances are long overdue. Lakewood has long prided itself on being a walkable and bikeable community, but the reality is that our streets have not been kept, or have not kept pace with our values and our needs. Every resident deserves to move safely and comfortably through our city, whether they are walking to school, biking to work, using a mobility device to access the grocery store, or driving. Complete streets is not a radical concept, it is the best, it is a best practice embraced by cities across the country to ensure our public right-of-way serves everyone. It prioritizes safety, equity, accessibility, and sustainability in how we design and maintain our streets. It recognizes that transportation is not just about getting cars from point A to point B as quickly as possible, but about supporting public health, economic vitality, and community connection. In less than two weeks, I will be attending a back-to-school resource fair, where I'll be sharing information with families about hike, about the hike and bike encouragement program. What should I say to parents at this event who tell me they want their kids to walk or bike to school, but don't feel it's safe enough to do so? Encouragement efforts alone are not enough. We need infrastructure and policies to make walking and biking safe and viable choices year-round. We cannot keep postponing these commitments. These ordinances will create the policy framework and advisory structure needed to guide thoughtful, evidence-based decisions. They will ensure that Lakewood has both the vision and the accountability to implement changes that benefit everyone, not just those behind the wheel. I urge you to pass these ordinances as soon as possible. Imagine a Lakewood where every child can walk or bike to school safely, where older adults can cross the street with confidence, and where our community feels connected, healthy, and vibrant, because our streets truly welcome everyone. Let's move from intention to action and build that future together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oregon? I'm assuming you would like to make a comment?
Hey, good evening. I was going to stay at home tonight and give you all a break from this, but there's no stream, so I couldn't watch online. So I came in, and if you're giving me an opportunity to comment, obviously, I'm going to take it. I would just like to point out that this ordinance doesn't really affect me all that much. much on the surface. I'm a pretty strong, confident rider. If I need to go somewhere on my bike, if I need to walk somewhere, I'm going to do it and I'll probably be fine. There are cases where drivers aren't necessarily paying attention, but I always keep my head on a swivel, I'll probably be okay. That said, this is for everyone. This is not just for mammals, middle-aged men in Lycra. This is for everybody in Lakewood to be able to get around without the use of a car. One of the arguments that you hear most commonly is, you know, I can't, I can't ride my bike to work. I work too far away. I can't get to work. I can't get to wherever because I work too far away. This thing is too far away, whatever. But that doesn't mean that those people can't do their daily errands, going to the grocery store, going to a restaurant, going to meet up with friends at the library or the park or something like that via bike. So even if people, you know, I'm not going to sit here and pretend that Cleveland is this progressive hub of transportation, that everybody can get around by bike, like in Amsterdam or Copenhagen or something like that. But this is the first step towards that for everybody to be able to start testing the waters at least and get around their neighborhood without a car. How great would it be if we didn't have to worry about drunk drivers because people are going to the bar on foot or on a bike or something like that? I know I would feel a lot more comfortable on the streets if people weren't driving to get to everything that they had to do up to and including bars. That's a bad thing. So I fully support the case and the active, active and complete streets ordinance. It is July fourteenth. We've got, I think, 20 days until King of the Hill comes back and it sounds like this is within grasp. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other, anybody else want public comment? We have a, okay. All right, so let's move on to the case, Complete and Active Streets Education Advisory Board. I sent out today a substitute, pretty minor changes from when we had it before us, including the items that we amended in committee before and then just a few small changes based on our conversation and conversation with others. So I will, you can kind of walk us through that a little bit. So no major change to the whereas clauses there. The whereas clauses lay out all of our different, as I call them, guiding documents that I'm always referring council back to when we have our retreats and when we talk about these things, that we do these resolutions and the administration puts a lot of effort and staff into having our community vision and our climate action plan and our ADA transition plan and our IWP and all these different things that we're all, interact together as well as the active transportation plan and safe streets for all plan and now complete streets ordinance. So this is literally where the rubber meets the road, all these different users using the right-of-way together. As we've been discussing, there's not one silver bullet solution as folks are potentially transitioning from a, you know, car-centered culture to a people-centered culture and all the different people using those right-of-way. And so we, so starting with how we kind of went through this, last time, we did add in the and accessible, accessibility is a big part of this as well. We changed the membership a little bit. We did this in committee a little bit. I amended in the substitute, so there's, based on some feedback from some of the ADA Transition Plan Task Force members who, when we went through that process, really wanted to make sure that we had a way to have continued engagement with the ADA Transition Plan, kind of like with Complete Streets is these are, we've said we're going to do these things. This provides continuous citizen engagement with that process, so both infrastructure as well as public education. So in the membership, we amended it here in the substitute to have two community members with significant lived experience navigating the city rights of way with a disability. You know, it was expressed by some of those members that it would be preferable to have folks with two different disabilities. I did not lay that out here. I didn't know that it was necessarily appropriate to codify that someone could be disqualified for having the wrong kind of disability or something like that, so, you know, but just in thinking of a variety of lived experience, I think is helpful there. It's very different, different to navigate rights of way as a person with a visual impairment versus a mobility impairment. And then we added the public transit user, I believe in committee last time, and that the, a member of the school district should be invited to serve. We can't necessarily require them to do that, but we'll invite them to do that. And I think those are, oh, no, a little bit added, there were some discussion about the bylaws and such. Did add in, so this, the Complete and Active Streets Education Advisory Board, the way it was originally written is she'll meet at least quarterly, except when there's no business to conduct, may meet more. I did add in, may be called by the chair or a majority of members. And since we have a chair, I added that into, which is standard for all of our boards and commissions typically have a chair. So added in, into the bylaws and rules of operations section that they shall elect a chair from its voting membership who shall be empowered to, and shall be empowered to adopt its own bylaws and rules. So this follows pretty much the same language as the Public Art Advisory Board and it just adds in that chair capacity. So I just wanted to touch on too, as we were talking about the Complete Streets ordinance, one of those elements about, we talked about this a little bit in committee before, but that, you know, there's some interest from folks about updating the active transportation plan more than every 10 years. The active, the Complete Streets ordinance does have that reporting out structure, so that does give us some mechanism as that's reported out every year to council to recognize if we think, you know, hey, there's, there's a lot going on here and we want to see that change happen sooner. The case Education Advisory Board also provides another mechanism for adaptations in between those 10-year implements, but their main function is to help support active transportation plan and safe streets for all, as well as the ADA Transition Plan and education about those elements, as well as Climate Action Plan and Tree Preservation to Councilman Bullock's plan. So they'll have a lot going on. Okay, so I will open up to questions or comments from council members. Councilman Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Once again, thanks, everybody, for working on this. Both these taken together, I think this is just, this is a great avenue towards more and more proactive engagement with the community between Complete Streets and this ordinance. And this one, I think, gives us that extra layer of input and accountability that we need to do things right in the city. I was unfortunately able to not make the last meeting, but I listened to the notes and was happy that a couple of my concerns were addressed, namely inviting the school board to be involved. I think having the schools more involved in our transportation and safety issues is critically important. They're one of the biggest users of our streets, school kids, so I think, and they're a great add and I hope they'll take us up on that offer. And also the transit user, which I think was missing. So thanks for those additions. My one issue, and this has been shared and there's different opinions in this, I don't see the need to have a person who's main experience is driving. I think there's enough overlap with every other group on this list and I think these projects are inherently designed with drivers in the mind to begin with, but I will not throw up a roadblock over that issue. I just hope we can be more deliberate in thinking about who we're adding to the list. Yeah, pun intended on that. But again, thanks, everybody. Thanks to the administration, Law Department for all your work on this and planning and everybody here who did so much hard work. I'm happy to see this one through as well.
Councilwoman Marks?
Thanks. I too am happy to see this. I think anytime we can engage people in the community into decision-making process, it's, the decisions are more sellable to the rest of the community. I like your choices for membership and I'm very happy and excited to see this move forward and I will support. Thank you.
Other council members? Councilwoman Hamilton-Steyner?
I am very excited and happy to support this. As we're talking through and discussing the makeup of this, of case, it reminds me of a couple of years ago when we had talked about having and establishing an intersectionality safety task force. So I think in a roundabout way, you got there, we got there, so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a few years, but it's another, another way to come at it as well, so. No, nothing. Vice President Baker?
Yeah, so thank you, President Keppel, for leading the way on this. And also, just noting, Councilwoman Bullock sent us an email with some of his suggestions, one of which being that the motorist representative potentially be a commercial driver, a CDL holder. I see value in that, but I'm not, and we can do that as it relates to actual appointment, right? Because we have appointment authority and so does the administration. I just don't know how many CDL drivers live in Lakewood. I'm sure there are many. So I think that's something that like maybe isn't in the ordinance, but perhaps we can focus on as we make our appointments. And he said, maybe to have two representatives with mobility issues, like senior citizens. I think that that can be captured in some of the other categories as well, but good suggestions. And I do think that, I know, to Councilman Evans's point, I think that this is, it's a multi-layered approach, right? So one is the big, major capital projects you're doing and then some implementation you can do mid-project, like the implementations we put in at Hilliard. Or even, and they, some of these midterm projects can produce proof of concept. I think about, when I was on Planning Commission, we approved, I believe it was the casino funds to do some painting in those blades of grass along Detroit, Sloan, and Valley Parkway. And that proved the concept that that intersection didn't need to be that big. It was giant. And so then, once you have the proof of concept, you can then move curbs and kind of put a road diet on. So I think that these, that case will provide kind of an avenue for that. And then another thing I think we should think about, and it doesn't, I don't think it needs, it belongs in the language of the ordinance, but Lakewood Alive and their Design Committee already has a task force that literally does walk audits of the city, walks around and pushes the walk buttons and if they don't work, let's signal, signal group no and let's Public Works know. I do think that we can, and then some of the work that Lakewood Alive does inherently is like, kind of like ancillary city services that we kind of work with them collaboratively on to expand what we can normally do. And so I think finding a way to engage them in this process and their group, and they have a lot of really good data already, and they have Google Maps that kind of have problem intersections, a lot of good walk audit data. So I'm excited to see how we can meld those two things together and really produce more results. So it's exciting and I'm excited to support this, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, there's a lot of good ideas for what this group could be doing as well as the communication that Councilman Bullock and Evans and Marks and Strebig sent with ordinance with a number of ideas. And I understand there's going to be another version of that coming out, but that I could see that the case advisory board would be a place for some of those ideas to be deliberate on and prioritized by that group as well as recommending to council in terms of priority of things. And then I know there had been some conversation at one point during some of the Madison-Hillyard discussion about implementing, using the crash analysis studio as a, as a tool that could be a good training tool for this group as well to kind of be thinking about those intermediary approaches. So I don't think they're going to be hurting for work to do as well as, you know, public education and engagement, Hiked Bike to School Week and all those different things. So I'm excited to see what comes out of there. Oh, there was another element, which was, and Director Byington and I talked about a little bit today, was the Planning Director of Directors, Dyson Eusch, will be Secretary of the Board and serve as a non-voting member. We had some conversation, I had some conversation with some of the community members about whether that should be the ADA coordinator, but in thinking through it, we thought that may very likely be the case, but we wanted to have a little more flexibility just so that, you know, that person might be out of town or, you know, and we don't, we don't want the group to not be able to meet or something just because of that. All right, other comments? Comments from the administration? Director Vargo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure it's the intent of council, but when the revisions came out, concern was expressed by members of the administration on a, on a non-substantive area, 161.04A. The concern is if, if the chair or a majority call too many meetings in the administration's eyes, well-intentioned as they may be, that it might be too big of a demand on the time of the administration. So there's no problem with the, with the minimum of four meetings or maximum of four. The request would be for consideration by the committee that where you've added and may be called by the chair or a majority of members, we would respectfully request that you consider inserting after and, and comma, upon agreement of the Public Works Director, comma, may be called by the chair or a majority of members. We're just asking that the administration have a say in the decision to have greater than four meetings a year.
Thank you, Director Vargo. I guess, so a couple of things. One is, just for clarity, the ex-official members, save for the staff member from the Planning Department, sorry, Planning Department again, but are ex-officios, so may or may not need to be at every meeting, just depending on what the group is talking about. I guess one of the things I would just question, so as we've, you know, as some of, we've worked with other boards and commissions, this question has come up on some of them I've been with, is, most of them meet monthly, but it's not necessarily set that way by ordinance, some of them it is. We're kind of all over the map with these ordinances, unfortunately, and that's on the to-do list, is to get some of these boards and commissions cleaned up so that they're standardized, but, and then we've had that question come up before about who gets to call a meeting or not, or cancel a meeting or not, and because they set their own bylaws, and some of the groups, and some of the groups not. So there's sort of a, that's why I thought it was maybe good to have that in writing because otherwise, it's, when they go to set up their own bylaws, they could do it themselves. So that, I mean, we could, I hear the concern though about having, you know, daily meetings or something wild. Councilman Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I'd be more comfortable with language that was, you know, quarterly, but then having a maximum on it. I just, I worry a little bit about, and this is not, you know, current people in the room about one person being able to just derail a project that a majority of the board members want to do moving forward in perpetuity. So I would be happy to put a limit on it. I totally get that, resources and everything. I would be more comfortable with that language as opposed to what was proposed by the city.
Thank you. Although, I guess, it's hard, you know, when you're doing these things to, because you could envision a scenario where we say no more than 12 meetings and then we have the opportunity to go for a grant or something and call a quick meeting and, you know, but, so that's just kind of a, but I appreciate the intent there too. Other council members? I mean, we could, one other way would just be, you know, we could remove that language and allow them to address it in their bylaws and just take out the, and may be called by the chair or majority of members. So quarterly minimum and then let the group decide in their bylaws. Does that seem fair?
Yes, Madam Chair. I believe that that'll, that'll work. And there was, Councilman Evans, there was no intent that it would go to one person. We're drafting this on the fly this afternoon, so it could have been administration, but I think your solution works very well, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. All right. Okay, so I will make a motion to remove, oh, oh yes, thank you. I know, process guys, I'm a process person, too. We don't, we don't do a lot of sausage-making on the floor, so we get rusty sometimes. All right, so first, I will move to substitute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right, and then I will move to strike from 161.04A, "and may be called by the chair or a majority of members."
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay. Any further discussion? Any public comment? You're, we've already had public comment, but you're welcome to do it again if, no? Okay. All right, so then I will move to refer favorably to full council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay, so we will expect to see these on the docket of the next full council meeting, which is next Monday. And with that, we have no further business before committee of the whole. Without objection, we're adjourned.